Good afternoon, good evening. Actually, it is Monday, September 23rd at 6:06. I'll call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting. So tonight, obviously, we're here for a couple of celebrations. So we're gonna, we're gonna start with Mark Joes. So just wanted to say a couple of quick little things. You know, forty-four years with the town is no easy feat. Multiple roles. And based on this audience shows, you know, the appreciation for the two people that we have here to honor tonight. So on behalf of the town, I really do want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. So first, I would like to call up Kalen as well as Mark to the podium over here.
Just for everybody's information, the meeting's being recorded.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. And will be available on our town's YouTube page. I apologize, I was so worried about what was actually happening that I skipped that piece of it. Thank you, Debbie.
So for those who don't know me, my name's Kalen Joes. I'm a sergeant here at the Free Town Police Department. And I was asked to say a few words tonight on behalf of my dad and his years of service to the town of Free Town. First and foremost, I speak for the two of us when I say thank you to the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator Deb Petty, Town Clerk Cheryl Estrella, Executive Assistant Lou Anzuzo, and for all of you here in attendance for being here tonight and for his recognition. For the past thirty-five years, my father has served as a harbor master for the town of Free Town. He was first appointed as the Assistant Harbor Master in 1989 and was appointed full-time two years later. Prior to that, he served as a Call Firefighter EMT from 1980 through 1995, a position he held with honor and pride. To this day, his fire helmet remains on display on the top shelf in his office welcoming all who enter. We come from a family of public service, and for four generations, each of us have proudly served the town of Free Town in various capacities. Each one of us learning from our predecessors in hopes of fulfilling the legacies they've left behind. Values such as honesty, integrity, and hard work have been instilled in us with a strong emphasis on community. Never forgetting where you came from and helping out your neighbor when at all possible. It takes a village. Recently, after an unexpected diagnosis, our family has been reminded just how strong and vast our village is. We are truly grateful for the continued support of our neighbors near and far and appreciate all of your acts of kindness, encouraging words, and well wishes. Although the decision was difficult, my dad chose to resign from his position as a harbor master to the town of Free Town after forty-four years of combined service. Dad, I know this next chapter isn't exactly how you imagined it, but I hope it includes nothing but relaxing porch naps, that big adventures, and healthy scans. I hope throughout the remainder of my career, I continue to make you proud and promise to serve with those same values you instilled in me many years ago. From all of us here tonight and the residents of the town of Free Town, we thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for the recognition and coming out tonight. Thank you.
Very well said. Mark, we have a certificate here from the Selectmen in the town of Free Town honoring your forty-four years of service. It was a plaque.
Thank you.
I can see it right here. I have a couple of representatives that would like to come up and also honor you. Sorry.
Go on this side and leave this side for...
However you'd like.
Come on over here, right center stage. That's where you belong. My name's Maureen Plant again, and it's my honor to represent State Senator Michael Roderick's. And it's my honor to present to you the citation from the State Senate. It's an official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Mark A. Joes in recognition of your forty-four years of dedicated service and commitment to the town of Free Town. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, signed by Karen Spilka and Secretary Michael Hurley and Senator Michael Roderick's. Thank you so much for your service.
This might be the last time I appear before the Board of Selectmen. It's been an honor to serve Free Town for twelve years. I always tell my friends in Westport that Free Town and Westport are just alike. Only difference is you've got your forests and we've got our beaches. Both towns are small towns. They want to stay that way. And they're filled with people who really care about their town. They're filled with people like your family who are willing, who have served for generations. And, you know, public servants, service isn't always the easiest thing to do. We all know Chief Rose, Chief Ashley, and all the others who are here. That we get calls in the middle of the night, and we get second guests all the time, and that goes with it. But what other job can you have when you wake up every morning knowing that you're going to serve the people? And Mark, I think you exemplify that service to others, and so it's an honor for me to represent to you a citation from the House of Representatives. And we offer our sincerest congratulations to you and your forty-four years of service. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I would like to say that my colleague, Representative Fiola, who has also signed the citation, is here in spirit. She got called away, she couldn't make it. Her new legislative aide, Carly Maderas, welcome Carly, is here representing Carol. So, Mark, from both Representative Fiola and myself, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we take the time, is it?
All right. Well, let's continue on with the party. Well, the good times, the good vibes. And the next person we're going to discuss tonight or congratulate is Ms. Linda Ramirez, who I consider a friend. So if I may have Linda and Chief Ashley to the podium, please. Come on up.
Well, thank everyone for being here tonight. I was asked to say a few words regarding Linda's time with the town. Fortunately, I had Chief Abbott had done a lot of the homework for us, so I didn't have to do a tremendous amount of research because he'd done a great deal of it for me already. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna outline what Linda's time has looked like while she was here with the town of Free Town. Linda began her employment with the town as a dispatcher in 1974. My first involvement with Linda was in 1985, when I became a Call Firefighter. She was then serving the Police and Fire Departments and the Communications Center. At that time, calls at night for the ambulance were by telephone. We had a standby crew, it was called, and I can, I can still hear Linda's voice in the middle of the night. "Harry? Hello? This is Linda at Communications. I'm sorry to wake you, but we have a medical emergency." I mean, that's like the kindest dispatch message you could ever have. Right? Just, "I'm sorry." Was just always, always upbeat and just a great person. In 1988, Linda added part-time clerical positions for the Soil Board, the Conservation Commission, and the Finance Committee. In 1989, she left dispatch and became the Senior Clerk for the Building Department and Board of Health. Roughly a year later, in 1990, she moved across the hall to become the Senior Clerk for the Board of Selectmen, and she held that position until she was promoted to Administrative Assisment for the Board of Selectmen in 1999. Hey, remember in all this? I know you do. She served in that role until her retirement in 2010. At that time, she spent roughly seven years probably enjoying the best job that either one of us has ever had, and that's being a grandparent. So she spent, she spent the next seven years helping Liz out with, with the grandbabies, and I know she enjoyed that immensely. And then in 2017, the Fire Department had a vacancy for a part-time Senior Clerk. So as Chief Soviet can attest, Linda was a natural fit for that position. She always loved the, the Fire Department and the Police Department, so that was just a natural fit for her. I'll say that Linda literally knows everyone in town. If someone, if she doesn't know you, she knows your parents, if she doesn't know your parents, she knows who lived in your house before your parents. She's just an encyclopedia of Free Town, our history and the people here. And it's just, it's an amazing thing, and it's a quality you don't see very often anymore. She's still currently serving on the Parade and Fireworks Committee. She's also served as the Town's Procurement Officer, Parking Clerk, Assistant Grant Coordinator, Delicate Desert Ed, Citizens for Citizens Advisory Board, Election Worker, Local Emergency Planning Committee, Emergency Management Member, Emergency Preparedness Committee, and Historical Commission. So that's, there's the history, right? That's, that's how she knows all these things. And like, like the world around us, all things change with time. The Fire Department is growing immensely, our demands are growing immensely, and we've outgrown the part-time clerk position. So that position's transitioning to full-time, and so Linda's retiring again. I've worked with Linda to some extent for my entire adult life. She's the kindest person you could ever work with, I will say that. She'll always be part of the Fire Department family. She helped me with my transition to the Chief's Office. I'll always be grateful for that. So she spent seven years with us, and I think I speak for everyone here, especially for my department, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all your service in the town of Free Town and especially the Fire Department. So in recognition for your, your seven years with us, we have a, we have a little award here. The Fire Helmet, Senior Clerk, recognizing your seven years of service.
It's beautiful. Oh my gosh. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you from the bottom of my heart, really. This was beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you.
Don't go in it just yet. All right? My turn. Constellation Prize, you get to hang out with me for a few seconds. How you doing? Congratulations. We also have a couple of things for you. All right? One is a plaque ourselves. I like yours. The one you have now is very nice as well. All right? This is from the town of Free Town. All right? Forty-two years.
Thank you.
Forty-two years.
Thank you so much. I can't thank you enough.
Come here. This, this town, like Chief said, he said a lot of things about you. A lot of, a lot of roles you held over the years. So this town, in many ways, has been shaped by you. All right? You'll forever be in its veins and its heart. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much.
All right? And on top of that, I know the Select, the Senators' Office and the Representatives' Office are going to give you some certificates, but again, not as, not as grand, grand delicious as the one we have here in Free Town. A certificate telling you pretty much, same thing that we care and appreciate your forty-two years of service.
I am blessed. I am so grateful. Thank you.
Hold it here, so you don't have to keep holding it down. Senators and Representatives' Office, come on down.
So I had an opportunity to be able to come up and talk one-on-one with Linda and congratulate her and thank her for her service and beg her forgiveness because her citation is sitting on the Senator's desk in the State House. So I apologize for that, but the sentiment is expressed sincerely from me to you on behalf of the Senator for an unbelievable career that you have gifted everybody. Obviously, you like to be in the middle of things. Oh, I do. Yes. I always liked what was going on in my life. It really did. It was wonderful. That's wonderful, and what a wonderful gift to the, to the town. Congratulations. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Thank you.
One of the greatest pleasures I've had in serving is with the other public servants that I've worked with. Folks like all of your friends in town and folks like Representative Fiola and most particularly Senator Roderick's. I've had the good fortune of serving with him for fourteen years. We've tried to do the right thing for the communities we represent. High amongst, a high on the list of public servants that I treasure would be you, Linda.
Thank you so much. We thank the world of you, too.
Well, I, I, that means, that means an awful lot to me.
I mean that very sincerely.
It means an awful lot to me, and I think of all you've done for Free Town, and I would add to the list that you had of, of your official titles, I think of you as being the chief cook and bottle washer of the VFW. Am I right about that, John? Yeah, you've, you've...
Oh, we have a lot of fun there.
Yeah, we sure do have a lot of fun, and I've just enjoyed it here. There. So I, it's, it's an honor to present you with a citation from the House of Representatives with all my heart and with all my appreciation. Many thanks to you.
Thank you so much. Oh, I'm so grateful. Thank you very much. I could never have...
Give me a hug.
Do you mind if I grab a photo with you? No, so, so, we're just gonna actually, if we can take, if we can take some photos, yeah, with, with Mark and everyone as well. So we can do some separate, some together, you know, and then we'll take a... All right. So if we want, we can start with Linda, we can do both. It really, it's nothing...
All right?
Okay.
Yeah. Maureen?
You want to stand around the podium? You're the star. You're the star. You want me to turn this around so you can see the awards?
Does maybe everyone want to hold one of Linda's many awards?
That's a nice picture.
Here's Karen. Grab the other one, please, hold on. That's all right, I got my pictures.
I got somebody's off, I got a lady. I just got myself a nice... Hi, John, I didn't get to say hi. Really, I'm glad you came. Thank you. Kalen, I think wants to take a picture. What's that? Thank you. I will talk to you soon. Thank you. Help yourself.
We're gonna hear the one thing, the first agenda thing.
Thank you.
Charles. I apologize. to ten minutes.
Motion made.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, everyone, back to the, to the meeting. So we're actually on Agenda Item Number One. So Agenda Item Number One, Discussion and Vote Whether to Approve But Not Release Executive Session Minutes from 9:00, 9:24. So with that, I will entertain a motion to release executive, executive session minutes from 9:00, 9:24.
I make that motion.
I will second it. I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion to release or not release?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Discussion about why I make, I, I, excuse me. I entertain a motion to not release the executive session minutes from 9:00, 9:24.
But we're approving them?
I'm sorry?
But we're approving them, right?
Yes. Sorry. Approved but not released.
Approved but not released. I make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number Two, Discussion and Vote Whether to Approve the Surplus List from the Council on Aging and the Transfer Station Supervisor on what to do with the list of items in Attachment A. So, I have the list, I think. So it was a bunch of, like, filing cabinets and, just bear with me, because I should have had my computer on before this.
Do you have the list? Yep, it's eleven cans of paint, a small table, some old desk phones, eight keyboards, five desk printers, car table, seventy-three blank award plaques, typewriter, fax machine, baby monitor, four old processors from HP and Compaq, internet conditioner.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, some of the stuff can, we're pretty much, I don't think there's any value to any of that, right? I don't see any value in anything that was just listed.
Many of them are broken.
Yeah. So I, I think we could send it over. My recommendation would be to send it over to the transfer station and, you know, let them put it in the correct bins. I mean, I'm sure...
And they have the swap shed on the bottom of the list there.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. I wish I had this open.
Yeah, no, the swap shed's a good idea. Some of these items might, might do well in there.
The bottom.
Okay, oh, yeah. Yeah, the swap shed, which is old and not salvageable. So, so, yeah, so the only thing that we show as having any value is a, you know, a paper sorter and then the four, four drawer filing cabinet. Well, I guess if it's not, not really worth anything, we'll get a little bit of money out of it from the scrap value of the metal, so. So I guess, I mean, I say that, we just, you know, send it all over to the transfer station and...
Right. There's, there's no point of holding on to it. Sort, sort through the process and get rid of it and move on with our day. I'm sure there's some value there somewhere.
All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the surplus list from the Council on Aging and Transfer Station Supervisor and send it all to the transfer station for disposal?
I concur. I make that motion.
I will second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda Item Number Three, Discussion and Vote Whether to Approve and Revise the Snowplow Hourly Rates and Remove Early Sign-On Bonuses for Winter 2024 and Winter 2025?
There's no snow coming.
Pretty good, there isn't. We're not going to have anybody to move in.
So, so, yeah, so, you know, we have, we have Chuck here who can speak a little bit more to this, but, you know, last year is an incentive we, we put out in, an incentive bonus to get people on early. Basically, I don't think it got anyone extra.
I think we got one that signed on early, but it didn't fly like I thought it would. Five-dollar bump. No other towns that I've canvassed have come up with their current rates, but they're all leaning towards some kind of bump. So I'm, I'm thinking a five-dollar increase will at least maintain the staff that we, we have. It's totally up to your discretion.
Yeah. Listen, you know, we, we hear over and over again how good you guys do, right, with our roads and how they, they, they leave our town and they see it one way and they cross the line. And, and I don't want to say I just hear it, I see it. So, you know, my hat's off to you guys, and if it's based on anything in the way it's been, five times zero, still zero. So, knock on wood, we don't have anything, but we do need, and I say it half jokingly, but we really do need to be competitive with the surrounding towns.
Correct.
Because there is some people who are very loyal to the town, but there is also a lot of people who are going to find out that they can go to the next town over and make a lot more money, and that's what they'll do. So we do need to stay competitive in the market.
Correct.
I don't think five dollars is going to make or break the town, but it could make or break, you know, some of our season plow guys.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Chuck, how many, how many did you have last year, and how many do you believe are coming back this year? Just ballparking, I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire.
I don't know. We might, we, we might have hit twenty-eight subcontractors last year. It's too early to tell. I haven't touched base with anybody quite yet. We've been so busy. Hopefully, we can get at least what we had last year, but the last two seasons have pretty much been a bust for our subcontractors. So they've shelled out a lot of money on their equipment, on the insurance, on everything to prepare for the season, and they haven't recouped the money that they've invested. So a lot of them, you can do that a couple of years, but for our subcontractors, I kind of hope we have a heavy winter. You know, just so they can get revitalized. You know, they're like, "Wow, I can make $10,000," where last year, I think last year we plowed three times, but, you know, it was all small amounts. So, yeah, I think a five-dollar increase, I know other towns will pay more, I know there's other towns that pay less. Without being conceded, I think they like plowing for us because everybody wants to play for the best. And honestly, our snow operation with Eric's help and all the guys, I don't think anybody can touch us. So, like I said, five dollars, you know, a normal call in, a four-hour storm, it's an extra twenty bucks. So, you know, if we have a heavy winter, it's going to add up, but I, I think, I think you have to do it just to stay the status quo.
And I, I also will, without dragging this down a rabbit hole, but, you know, they, we did have to increase their insurance against them, right, because of what we're having to do. It's nothing personal to them, but, so to your point, there's more money out of pocket to them. So, you know, the guy who's plowing, who doesn't own a business and just out there plowing with his truck, you know, there's a lot of upfront costs to them, and so with risk needs to come at least some small reward, and this can help it, so...
Like I said, for an average quick-hit storm, four-hour storm, you're going to pay them an extra $20, you know, to, to run a truck. It's not a...
But I, yeah, it's so tough to say what that number they would go up to, so it's, I think that this is a good incentive, so.
I agree.
Um, alright, so, um, with that, uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the revised snowplowing rates and remove the early sign-on bonus for winter twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number four, uh, discussion and vote on establishing a speed limit for the Sonoma Bay shores. Um, so as someone who lives there, um, you know, a lot of small, tight roads and, um, the understanding is, is that there was really never a speed limit set. So, um, alright, we have the chief here, I'm not sure if he has anything he would like to say about it.
Um, the only thing I, I could probably say is that we're fielding complaints too regarding some of the recent activities in the general area. And I think it can be identified with a very small, minute amount of residents in that general area. Currently, we do have one of our traffic devices on one of the streets in the Bay shores just collecting data right now, just to see what's actually going on in the neighborhood. But, um, regarding setting the speed limits in the general, um, area, I know the town had passed, uh, and adopted, uh, statute reg, uh, giving the selectmen the ability to, um, regulate certain speed limits in the community. Um, I am not completely fluent in that process and I wasn't able to get the answers that I was looking for today through Mass DOT. So the only thing I would question and, um, be hesitant is to, if we're gonna go down that road, I would suggest that we get some clear direction, whether it's through Mass DOT or another community that has done it properly. And give me a little bit more time on the proper way of, or how the town can properly post, uh, a set speed limit that's authorized by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
And, and I appreciate that, we had this, uh, article from, uh, special town meeting in two thousand seventeen, it was in article ten. Um, and I'm just gonna read it quickly to see if the town will vote, uh, to accept the provision of MGL, chapter ninety, section seventeen C, and inserted by, insert. Inserted by section one ninety-three of the so-called Municipal Modernization Act, chapter two eighteen, in the acts of two thousand sixteen, allowing the Board of Selectmen to establish a speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour in any thickly settled or business district in the town that is not a state highway or take any relative actions there too. So this was approved, so, um, I don't, but I would be a fool to argue against what you just said, as well as I don't want to jump to conclusions and then have to have us go back. So, um, I, I mean, I guess my thoughts are is maybe do we table this while we wait? Um, I don't, Debbie, do you have any insight, what do you think, I, I apologize.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I read this and assumed that we could, that the, the selectmen can, um, enact, uh, twenty-five miles per hour in the Sonoma Bay shore area, just, I mean, the reason for this is we've had multiple complaints. There is no established speed limit as of right now, so it's hard to enforce, um, anything when you don't have an enacted speed limit. But I, I mean, I don't think it has to be done tonight, we can do it at the next meeting, um, everything leading up to Sonoma Bay shores, just so you know, from that, turning on Narrows Road all the way through the Causeway Road is twenty-five, with the exception of one little area sort of in front of, across from Crystal Springs, it goes up to thirty for some odd reason, so. The vote that I would, might be looking for is Bay shore, everything from Narrows Road through Bay shores would be twenty-five. But if you want, I can, uh, vet this a little bit further, um, and put it on the next meeting.
Yeah, I guess I, I don't, I have a hard time believing that this won't stick, but I just, the last thing I want is for us to, to go out there and put up signs and have Chuck putting up signs and doing different things to have you say that we need to go against this because God forbid we have to change it. Um, and then we find out it's supposed to, and I don't think it would go to higher, it is kind of my thing, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess I just don't wanna rush to a conclusion, what do you, what do you think, Carlos?
I, I thought of that, and I look, then you read article eleven, which allows us as Board of Selectmen to establish a twenty mile an hour zone, which we did, I'll, right up the road.
Mm-hmm.
Using a similar statute, such, chapter ninety, section eighteen B versus.
Seventeen.
One ninety-four versus one ninety-three, so same act, um, so I'm wondering if one applies to the other. So, once we have the information, I think establishing a speed limit and posting it is the best way to go, because as you said, we've, we feel some frustrations from the residents as well, right? And we pass them on to the appropriate departments, so, uh, some, will this solve everything? Probably in long, long term, prob, maybe, short term, probably not, but it's a step in the right direction.
But I think it, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it does give us a little bit more strength behind, you know, stopping cars, going after speeders, right? What, what people.
So when we have areas in town that are not posted and approved by Mass DOT, we rely on the basic speed limit law. So what that is, is areas in towns that are, are considered to be thickly settled or business area, we rely on the thirty mile an hour speed limit, the basic speed limit law. The areas that are not thickly settled or not a business area, then it's identified as a forty mile an hour zone. But e- everything else, um, the signage has to be approved, the old way was by Mass DOT, what does that mean? The roadway had to be properly engineered, has to be analyzed, the, uh, the, the information was then submitted to, uh, Mass DOT for approval, and then they would give the blessing of whatever that posted speed limit would be.
Mm-hmm.
Up to two thousand seventeen, now, you know, pointing authorities have the ability to, you know, create these speed limits under those regulations. So there's now a second way of doing that, but, um, yeah, so I just, I guess I'm very unfamiliar with, you know, your ability as a board to be able to post in those areas and doing it right.
But what I guess, so, to, to my, my outlook on it is, is okay, we have to wait a couple of weeks, um, to, to get that clarification. We haven't had one forever there, right? So if we have to wait a couple of weeks to make sure that we go about doing this the right way, I'm okay with it. Um, you know, you bringing awareness to the neighborhood is key, right? We have officers in there, right, so we, you know, fielding calls there, you know, your offices might be in there a little bit more, we're putting up different stuff, so I think that that should hopefully, and I, as someone who's lived in the neighborhood for, I don't know, twelve or fourteen years now, you know, I don't see a huge problem with it, but all it takes is a couple of bad eggs, right? Where we, you know, it, it then becomes, it seems glorified where there's a couple of people who create that, so I don't, I, I'd rather wait, I guess, is my point, so, um.
At the end of the day, I, I, you know, admittedly, I don't really drive around the Sonoma Bay shore, shores as often as I'd like. Um, it is a beautiful area, y, but you folks do, right? So, um, if you say there isn't a sign there for all these ages and we have to wait a little while longer to make, to do it right the first time, yeah, I agree with that, that's, uh, it's no rush, it's, it's do it right the first time, it's not backtracking.
Alright, so, um.
Plus, it'll give you some time to get your neighbors off your back.
So, so, alright, so we're gonna pass on four, um, and then also agenda item number five, I'm gonna pass over for tonight because we have, um, some stuff we're still looking at and trying to work on that, so we're gonna move on five. Uh, just so we're gonna go on to agenda item number six, discussion and vote, uh, whether to close the transfer station on ten, two, twenty-four, from eight AM to one PM for training, which, um, this replaces the canceled training date originally set for nine seventeen. Um, so, you know, pretty straightforward, we've already talked about this a lot, but unfortunately it had to get canceled, so now we have to move it. Um, so I'm just gonna reiterate what we had said originally the first time, which is, you know, was try and do what we can to get the notice out to the good people of Free Town and let them know, so. You have any, you want to add to that?
No, that's, it's great that the training's still on.
Yeah, alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to close the transfer station on ten, two, twenty-four, from eight AM to one PM for training, which replaces the canceled training date originally set for nine seventeen.
Make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number seven, discussion and vote whether to approve the following policies, A, cellphone policy, B, motor vehicle tax reconciliation, and C, motor vehicle delinquencies. So, um, you know, you, you've been pretty heavy in this, Carlos, right? We, we're trying to, um, update a lot of the policies, procedures, stuff that's been, um, either non-existent or extremely old and antiquated, so, you know, I, I read through this stuff and it's, it's pretty straightforward. I don't feel like it's going to be, um, something that people are gonna look at and, you know, really worry about, so, um.
Right, no, these are all common sense things that, it, it hurts to say, common sense, I know, but th, these are run-of-the-mill standards across the industry for everything from cellphone policy, you know, while you're driving or in office, to, you know, your motor vehicle taxes. It, it's, there's better ways of doing things, and I understand that we're an old town, we've done it for X amount of years this way, but it's okay to look outside the box every so often and see what needs to be improved. That's what we've been doing for the past few years, is improving policy by policy, making sure we're up to twenty twenty-four and beyond, so, this is just a continuation of that.
Alright, so, um, so, yes, so I think, you know, enough stated with that one, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies, cellphone policy, motor vehicle tax reconciliation, and motor vehicle delinquencies.
I make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item number eight, discussion and vote whether to approve the ambulance abatements and write-offs for August twenty twenty-four in the sum of one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eight cents. Uh, it always seems crazy, but it kind of is what it is, right, so, um.
Good sum.
Yeah, so with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the ambulance and abatements and write-offs for August twenty twenty-four in the sum of one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eight cents.
Let me second, I'm sorry, second, I make the motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, agenda item number nine, acknowledge the memo detailing the spending of twenty-five thousand in federal opera funds for, uh, road striping. So, um, Chuck, who's no longer here, is, you know, was doing a great job, they have a lot of roads that they've repaved and, um, thank you town, Free Town for that, and, um, you know, but one of the things is now he's been out striping roads. And, um, in order to, apparently, I, I just learned this, was that it's very tough to get the, the company here. So we have, um, the company finished the, the roadway in order, you know, while we have them here so that we can finish everything and we're not having to try and get them back to do, you know, a few roadways. So, um, so we were, we were fortunate and we have federal opera funds, right? And we were able, we're able to use the federal opera fund, so, uh, no direct payer, no direct taxpayer dollars, so, so, yeah, so, um, that, that's just an acknowledgement, so there's really nothing to vote on there. Agenda item number ten, discussion and vote whether to approve the proposal for vertical communications at the Council on Aging phone system. Um, so, you know, I, I looked this over once again, it's, it's pretty simple, it's, you know, it's what we needed to do in order to, and we're just talking about, bring everything up to.
Yeah, this is a great example of that, how much, I, I want some stats here, if anyone could provide, um, the amount of money saved on this alone is unbelievable. Go from outdated system, they take all the materials back with them, or they, whether either refurbishment, throwing it in the trash, whatever, they, they buy the equipment back, and then we get better, if not same or better communication in return for less money per month.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, absolutely.
So I don't know what we were, we were spending before, so I only have, um, the total, um, you know, what we have now, but, yeah, so it's.
I think the one twenty, it'll be seven.
I think there was seven lines at twenty dollars, it was a hundred and tw, a hundred, either a hundred and twenty or one forty, so you're saving.
Saving fifty dollars a line, that's what you're saying.
And I think we're also adding a line, another line for the five.
Yeah, I think we're saving about, um, say seventy dollars a month. But we, but the problem is, they're right now through Comcast, who will no longer support the phones, so when we're having problems, they won't, they won't help us, they won't come out, they won't deal with it. So we're sort of forced to update the equipment, so, um, vertical is who we use at the town hall, and I believe here at the fire, uh, the police station, so we asked them and they're, they're cheaper, and so.
It's an all-around win, right?
And they'll, and they'll support the lines, so that's why we, we're doing that.
So, so there we go, for all those reasons, and, yeah, the proposal beyond, that's pretty straightforward, so, anything else, Carlos, on that? Alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Vertical Communications for the Council on Aging phone system.
I make the motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Alright, so I'm gonna be out of order, and we have some folks here, so, um, how to best do our time? Jessica, if you don't mind, I'm gonna leave you for my last one, that way we can concentrate solely on you, alright? Um, so that said, I'm gonna move over into number fourteen, discussion and vote on the perceived the harbor master's shellfish warding vacancy. So, welcome, let's talk about some shellfish and some, and some boats, water, and everything in between. Um, if someone could summarize it better than I can, uh, essentially, we have an opening, we have a retiring harbor master, we just retired today. We have a slip or a dock, or I think it's a slip or a mooring, sorry, a mooring, and there's another mooring, a secondary mooring.
Correct.
And the question was, is that mooring one in the channel? If it is, great, if not, we'll figure that out, deep water, at least, right? Or two, is it on the same property, right? So we're trying to figure out what's the, the best thing to do for the town and for our town residents, right? So, um, I know we have a lot of opinions and a lot of, uh, and a lot of facts as well, so I know we saw some charts from NOAA, right? Um, and then, they, you know, they're pretty clear of where, where things are, so who would like to add more information so that people at home understand what's going on?
Yeah, but this is, this is really just about the.
Oh, is it? I thought we were discussing the whole thing.
So I think that, um, what, there, there, there was a, a situation where I was asked to, if, if a mooring could be placed in the, in the Sonoma Bay shores. Um, at that time, I, I wasn't able to communicate with Mr. Joes, uh, so after some time and some questions, I tried to find if we had rules and regs. Of course, the town of Free Town doesn't have any written rules or regs, and I tried to find out what the baseline is. So at that time, I, I, I allowed the person to put in a mooring and said, if, if it's in the wrong place, you'll have to move it, but it was all, uh, on the up and up, and that mooring went in. It's been a, a concern to one of the neighbors, and unfortunately, Mr. Joes has retired, so I'm faced with how do I resolve a situation where I don't have a harbor master? So I, I reached out to, uh, Mr. Gannam from Somerset, he's been the harbor master for thirty-four years.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, and I asked him if he would be able to maybe help us and guide us, because we don't have rules and regs, he, he, I believe, has worked on them or grafted them for the town of Somerset. He's very knowledgeable, and I've asked him if maybe he could help the, the town moving forward. Now, we had posted the harbor master position and we've gotten some letters of interest, we have three letters of interest right now, but given that we don't have perimeters really in place, I, I think for the town moving forward, and I, and Mr. Gann had mentioned so that maybe the way that the harbor master position's gonna change in the near future, that maybe he could give you guys some updates on how that might.
Um, at that time, I, I wasn't able to communicate with Mr. Joes. Uh, so, after some time and some questions, I tried to find if we had rules and regs. Of course, the town of Free Town doesn't have any written rules or regs, and I tried to find out what the baseline is. So, at that time, I, I, I allowed the person to put in a mooring, and said, if, if it's in the wrong place, you'll have to move it. But it was all, uh, on the up and up, and that mooring went in. It's been a, a concern to one of the neighbors, and unfortunately, Mr. Joes has retired, so I'm faced with, how do I resolve a situation where I don't have a harbor master? So, I, I reached out to, uh, Mr. Gannam from Somerset, he's been the harbor master for thirty-four years. Thirty-three, and I asked him if he would be able to maybe help us and guide us, because we don't have rules and regs. He, he, I believe, has worked on them or grafted them for the town of Somerset. He's very knowledgeable, and I've asked him if maybe he could help the, the town moving forward. Now, we had posted the harbor master position, and we've gotten some letters of interest, we have three letters of interest right now. But given that we don't have perimeters really in place, I, I think for the town moving forward, and I, and Mr. Gann had mentioned that maybe the way that the harbor master position's gonna change in the near future, that maybe he could give you guys some updates on how that might look in a few years, and that might help how we move forward. Hopefully, maybe we could get somebody that would help shape our harbor master rules and regs, get some foundation in place so that as, uh, we move forward and hire a harbor master, we know what we're looking for and what the right person is for that, for that position. Does that, does that make more sense in, in what we're, what we're trying to do?
So, my first question would be, are you willing to adopt some rules and regulations so somebody, the next harbor master has something to go by? When I took over thirty-four years, thirty-three years ago, the town of Somerset was in the same position, no rules and regulations. So, I went and talked to other harbor masters, and I actually brought a copy of mine, my regulations for the town of Somerset, and I got a copy of Four Rivers. Four Rivers is a little overboard for something this size, but you should probably take a look at my regulations, send them to legal. You guys tweak them whatever way you want, add, delete, whatever. But for the next gentleman that, or person that, excuse me, is gonna come in as the harbor master will have something to base his decisions on. Because when I took over, again, I, I didn't have anything to go on. Um, so the first thing I would do before even think about a harbor master is try to get some rules and regulations amended in the town. The harbor master position itself is changing drastically, and if the police chief is still here, that's the gentleman that you're gonna wanna get involved. Because over the years, harbor masters were always grandfathered from going to a police academy. Those days are over, the way the police departments are getting scrutinized nowadays. Harbor masters have all the powers that a police officer has on the water. When we hit land, we're, we got nothing, but underwater, we can arrest people and so on. So, a lot of towns right now, a lot of towns in this area have switched over to the police department. And the actual harbor master is a police officer. Or if you get somebody that, if it doesn't end up being a police officer, they, they're required to take a full police academy training before they can qualify. I basically fall under the environmental police. All the rules and regulations that I enforce are based under the environmental police. So, the environmental police are here, I'm here, you know, I, I deal with the police and fire all the time. But I basically answer to the environmental police, and they're not going to allow harbor masters in the future just to be resident of the town, let's say. You need to be trained, uh, have some jurisdiction, the backing of the police department. It, it's all, it's all fallen under the police department, not that he probably needs any more headaches. But, um, you know, it, they have the grip on things, because when the bottom line of something goes wrong, they're gonna go back to the police chief and say, did you know this guy could do this, or he was out there doing it? So, I'm not making any recommendations, but Swansea, Forver, Dayton is in the process of it right now. The Dayton harbor master has police officer with him all the time. Um, Portsmouth, Rhode Island, there's police officers right now. So, I'm like a dying breed, I'm like the only one that's been doing it with, you know, grandfathered, you could say. I'm not sure if the police chief has heard anything like this from the past.
Over the years, as, um, an assessor for the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, I have visited a number of police departments throughout the state, and, um, involving this topic of harbor masters. Um, it's a flip of a coin. Um, some of these entities are within the scope of the span of control of the police department, some are not. But what I can tell you is this, once it's under the police department, there's gonna be a serious expense that comes along with it. Just the training alone of dealing with an officer is pretty expensive. Um, and then meeting all the requirements of the accreditation standards gets very involved. This is just not, as we, as he mentioned that, you know, moving forward, if that's the direction of the town, that, where we wanna go with this, it's gonna be very involved and, you know, to me, right now, with everything that I'm dealing with, I'd rather have officers on the street than putting them on the water, because the need is more on the street than on the water. I'm working on grants to get extra officers to deal with some of those resources now. So, I will say this, that, um, the, the grants that I recently applied for, the, yeah, twenty twenty-four cops grant, the federal grant, um, it was outlining a, um, beach and boat enforcement program. If we were able to get that money, and it supports that, I can see how that could be enveloped in with the harbor master, because that funding for three years to go directly towards this full-time officer position could support that. But that's pending on the grant. I don't wanna subsidize my patrol force to deal with the harbor master issues. But I just think the town's gotta have a thorough understanding that this can impact the budget. I can't work it within the budget, it has to be supported with funding.
All right, anybody else thinking, you gonna need a bigger boat? No? I was in my head the whole time, I was like, I gotta say it.
You guys have a boat?
No. Well, we.
The fire department.
The fire department has a.
I know, because Mark used to call me if they needed something, and, you know, I'd go up in my boat.
And I, I guess, you know, let's, let's look at what we're currently dealing with, right? And right now is what we have is an open space, we have no, no one, right? Other than, I guess, environmental police and the police wants it, you know, hits land, based on what you said, and, you know, jurisdiction, so, um, you know, I think we need to figure out what we can do today, and I, I have, first of all, I, I can't thank you enough for coming here, right, because you're here on your own dime trying to help us, so I do, could not appreciate that more, and I, I hope you know.
And I told Debbie that in the meantime, while you're looking for somebody, I can assist you, I can do, if anything was to go on, they can, don't hesitate to call me. I mean, because, you know, again, Mark used to call when they had an issue or something like that, or he needed assistance in some way, or whatever the case may be.
And, and, and that's even more of a reason to thank you. And then, you know, I guess my only question, concern is, is, you know, once again, gas isn't cheap, nothing's cheap. I mean, you're using your own time, so I think we'll have to find out, or figure out a way to, to give them some sort of compensation, so it's at least not costing him a dollar to come here, right?
There's not a, I, again, I don't take, I mean, I don't think there's a lot going on in the Asona River, uh, as far as where you need somebody patrolling the thing or something, or.
No, I don't think of patrolling more, I think of what, you know, the, the, the stuff that came up initially, right? Where there's, there's like concerns, and there's something to be said about your value through, your insight through, not, through.
Yeah, again, I, I wouldn't wanna jump in the middle of that discussion unless we had rules and regulations, or we can sit down with both, all parties and find out what the issue is. I'm not even sure the entire, um, problem, but again, uh, from my experience, you know, I can do what, what I, how I handle them in Somerset. Uh, and again, I don't have any jurisdiction in Free Town unless the harbor master who, in other words, for me to do any patrolling or anything in Free Town, I need permission from the harbor master, or the selectmen to say, we want you to, you know, back us up for the time being, and I'm more than willing to do that.
Yeah, and I guess that's what I would want to do, right, is have you back us up.
You don't want somebody to get hurt, or somebody go missing, or whatever, and, and you don't, you don't have somebody that can, um, who can respond. I mean, like he says, a fire department's gonna respond, the police are gonna respond if there's an incident, but if it's just an everyday problem, I'm, I'm willing to help you guys, tell you guys, resolve your issues, and like the chief says, what direction does the town wanna go in?
So, is it something you'd willing to be like interim harbor master while we were working on the rules and regs and help us? I've been here three and a half years, I've only had one call about something to do with.
Yeah. Again, you don't have a lot going on, and maybe a couple of mooring issues, but we can resolve those. I mean, I have the same thing, um, but I register my moorings, you know, we never had registered moorings. Um, right now, I have like roughly a hundred and fifty registered moorings. In the town of Somerset, we don't charge for moorings like some towns. We just want the mooring owner's information, contact information, what kind of boat's gonna be on it. It's more of an informational type registration, and I brought copies of the stuff that I do, that I created. And then in the meantime, it gives you, we're going into the winter, so it gives you like an off-season to try to resolve all your issues, and in the meantime, I have no problem. Um, I have boats on the water year-round, if my boat's not available, I call Fall River, Fall River assists me. It's a pretty close network, you know, when it comes to harbor masters, like any town, the police department, if they need assistance, they, you know, they're the towns. I can do the same thing until you guys, he's come to some type of resolution.
I appreciate that. I would like to entertain his offer, uh, to sit down with the gentleman and any people that have any issues that we can get this discussed, you know, and come to a resolution, it's been dragging on way too long.
Yeah.
So, we have to get, we would have, I mean, I guess, you know, we can have him sit down as, uh, you know, uh, just a, a, well, not even a resident, as a, you know, someone with experience, but I think the best thing to do would be for us to appoint him temporary, temporarily, and then that way we can say, you know, he's our harbor master, and then that way it, it holds a little bit more weight on both sides.
It's even better as well, he's an outside source, right? It's not a familiar face, it's gonna come in there objectively through the law, or, with that, he knows it, right, until we adopt our own. So, and as far as your paperwork, you have that in Word, Word, uh, document?
Yeah, I can, maybe, I gotta pay, I just brought a copy tonight, but I can email to Debbie, and, um, you know, and just she can, or you can take it right offline, if you go into the town of Somerset website, my rules and regulations and applications are right online.
Perfect. So, so would we have to have another, on our next meeting to appoint him?
If he's willing to be appointed as the interim harbor master, you could either do that tonight, or we can put it on the next agenda. We have an agenda coming up next Monday, right? We can always throw it on that agenda, that way it's.
Would it be cleaner to do it that way, rather than trying to, because it's not, I just don't wanna, I guess my question is, I don't wanna overstep.
Right, I think either way, I think this is, I just read this, I think we'd be fine either way, but we're gonna have a meeting on Monday, he doesn't need to be there for us to.
That's fine, I don't, I, I, again, my only, I would hold off, because when this video gets out and stuff, you might start getting a lot of phone calls about an outsider coming in, I'm not sure, I'm only speculating.
I mean, if we appoint you interim through June thirtieth, where all our appointments end on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, I mean, that's literally seven, eight months. It'll help resolve current issues, it will help us work through the, um, rules and regulations that I can get working on soon. Um, and then, I think we do have interested people, but they're, you know, we're reading you in your package, you'll see all the trainings. I, I don't know, there's a lot to it, right, more than I think I thought in the beginning of how much you need to be.
Basically, it's a somewhat of a volunteer position. So, people's gonna, they're gonna have to put a lot of time in for the training, and then they're gonna say, you know, I'm doing this as a volunteer, you know, um.
Right, I, I think we've discussed possibly, um, adding, uh, like an inspection fee. Like, if the harbor master has to come out and inspect a mooring, it would be so much of a fee. And so that's one of the things that we, we will need to put, um, an article on the town meeting for this that's coming up, so that we have the funding to do that. It's not, you're not gonna get rich at that, but at least it's a way of saying, you use your gas to come over here, and, and, and we can at least some, pay you on some level. But we can also talk further about that.
Yeah.
I think going forward, anybody that has to have that amount of training to be the harbor master is gonna wanna get some compensation, even if it's only on an as-needed basis.
And it's entirely up to you.
Yeah, so, so with your blessing, I say that, you know, we'll, we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting to appoint you, and then, and through, uh, June thirtieth, like Debbie said, and I'm sorry, Carlos, because this is like. But I'm just trying to, to talk out loud as we talk through it, because I think that's a good call, and I, I do think we should wait till the next meeting, only because then it keeps it clean, so.
Yeah, I guess it also gives me a chance to read what you, what you have, I wanna see these laws and, and what the proposals are, see how, how it'll benefit the folks down at the Asona Bay shores, and anybody transversing the channel and everything else, so, having ads is gonna be invaluable. I'm a big fan of adding, actually, a police force there, chief.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I bet.
He's okay with it as long as we give him the money and, and the extra person, right, like, and that's the part, right? It's not, not for nothing, I, I say it half jokingly, but it is, it's that.
I have unions to deal with.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. We'll table that, but it's good to know that's on her, on the horizon potentially, and, but it ultimately solves a, not an immediate issue, but it res, it gives us the, a clear path moving forward, we need some rules, we need some better guidance to what's there now, so that we don't have this issue in, in the future.
Especially if it's changing that much.
I think the, what has, has gone on, the issue that we have currently is because there are no rules and regs, there's nothing to follow.
Hard to enforce when you can't point at something.
Exactly. I had that same situation thirty years ago, you need something in writing.
Yep.
Bob, uh, thank you again, thank you, thank you, thank you, because it's, you know, it shows a lot.
I'll get that, so I'm gonna leave you my card, you know, if anybody had any questions, my cellphone, my emails here. When's your next meeting, Monday?
We have a quick meeting Monday morning at nine o'clock, so.
So, yeah, we'll.
If you have any questions in the meantime, uh, I don't think I have your email, but I'll give you mine, maybe you can just shoot me an email.
Okay, I will.
Then I'll send what I have for the town, and then you guys can look it over, and like I said, change it any way you want that's gonna fit your needs for Asona.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate that, I appreciate your time, and I, you know, I do appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, definitely learned a lot from, from all the emails back and forth and reading about what's going on, and it's, yeah.
Crazy.
It was my segue, like, when the, the whole thing came up, I was like, okay, we, it's, we're talking about the harbor master, but there's also underlying why we were discussing, that's why I wanted to discuss it, so, thanks for teasing me, all right.
No, I think that we'll probably entertain a meeting, I'll give you a call in the next couple of days.
Together and have that discussion together.
Yeah, that'd be good.
As neighbors and everything else.
And that way we can resolve that, I think, at least, or at least get everything out in the open, then you can maybe inspect the mooring once you're appointed, and then follow up with a report or something, just let me know, and we'll do whatever we need to do to resolve that issue. All right, perfect. All right, perfect.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anything to say before we move on? All right, you know, Jessica, how you, how you doing today?
Well, thanks, how are you?
Good. I'd like to go, I'd like to, uh, have a couple of words with you, if you don't mind. Come on down. So, once again, I'm gonna be out of order, I'm going to, um, item and agenda personnel board number sixteen, that is, um, doing an interview with, uh, Ms. Jessica Vanover for the part-time human resource director. So, hi, welcome back to another Free Town, uh, building. Um, so this is Jared, Jared Zager is one of our selectmen.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I believe you still, probably still remember Debbie.
See you again.
Maybe Luanne and Lola. And I'm, I'm still Carlos Loops, you're, you're personnel board chair. Um, so we're here today because we've done some interviews, and by looking at the interviews, and a lot of great people that came before and after you, um, a lot of great discussions had as far as what the position is and how to move forward. And after many discussions, we decided to bring you in and talk with us once again. Same setting, be yourself. Um, um, we wanna know who you are, and, and, uh, your resume brought you here, but, um, you're gonna be working with individuals, so that those individuals wanna know who, who you are, um, especially in an HR role position. So, um, welcome to the board of select meeting, and, uh, we have a few questions like last time.
Okay, that sounds good, thanks for having me.
So, just like last time, we have questions, and we ask all the candidates the same questions, if we decide to move forward with you, uh, then, you'll hear from the same channels you've been hearing from, whether our, our executive assistants and whatnot. Um, but we have some questions. It's the same thing as before, it's hard for us to ask you questions while I have a panel looking at you, and then you responding back. Deep breath, we'll get through it together, I promise, um, but I'm sure people are curious to who you are, so if you don't mind, tell us a little bit about who you are.
Sure. So, my name is Jessica, I've lived in Asona for roughly eight years now. Um, born and raised in Cincinnati, Ohio, uh, the reason that we moved here to Massachusetts was my husband was stationed. Uh, the reason that we moved here to Massachusetts was my husband was stationed here. Um, he was in the Marine Corps for just shy of ten years. He was stationed to support the Fall River Swansea area, moved to Fall River, happened to stumble along a lovely home on the lane, and, um, we fell in love. We did not think we were gonna be here long, so, um, his military career actually came to an end because we fell in love and we wanted to put down roots and start a family here. So now I have two girls, um, one just turned two on Friday, and one will be four in October, and this is. Yeah, I'm excited and, and I wouldn't want to raise them anywhere else but the lane. So, um, we're so lucky to have found this place and it just feels like home for us, so that's why we're here and that's why we're staying.
I love it. As a dad of two girls, I love it. I'm, I'm in the same boat as your husband.
They keep him busy.
Little bit older than yours, but yeah.
Thank you, Jessica. Jessica, where did you begin, for those watching from home, where did you begin your HR career, your, your, your path in the HR world?
Great question, because I never saw myself being in the HR really career field. I started in healthcare, um, always had a passion for helping people and wanting to be in healthcare. When I moved here, I had a work from home position, um, not knowing anyone, I needed to get out of my house. So, um, I found an opportunity at Blount Fine Foods, fabulous company. Um, I was able to slide in there in a wellness role, so I took my passion for helping people in healthcare and it aligned with HR. So I reported to the HR manager. When I was at Blount, I was there for over five years. Um, I had an opportunity to work alongside different folks within the HR field. So, we worked with payroll, we worked with generalists, um, it really exposed me to what people in human resources were doing each and every day. People hear HR and they typically run or fear they're gonna be fired or something not as positive as I wanted it to be. So, I really hated that feeling that, oh, you work for HR, ooh, I'm sorry, like, no, I love it and I love helping people. Um, so being able to have the opportunity to have that wellness part of it, educate people, and trying to find a way to, um, I guess, balance a culture to where we're here to help you, we still have to drive the business and the business need, but we're here to help as well. Um, my goal at the end of the day is to help employees bring their best selves to work, so, um, I'm thankful for Blount and that opportunity and it exposed me to all the wonderful things that HR folks really do behind the scenes that people just don't see each and every day. So, that's why I am here today.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct, some people think HR and they automatically think they're in trouble or there's something wrong with my pay or, but there is so much driven in the background that's HR field driven that people sometimes don't realize, right? You really are the person in the background, right? Making sure that we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing in the mission of that company or in this, in this situation, the municipality of Free Town, right? So, um, so great explanation, a good way to explain that to, to folks.
Totally, and it's a, to me, it's, you're an environment builder, right? Because through you, they can, you know, there's a lot of different things that are done through HR and it make people feel better about showing up to work each day, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot that was brought up initially about what's HR and everyone thinks negative. Everyone, not everyone, a lot of people head in negative direction or they head in, there's something wrong or whatever, and it's not always, it's, it's almost never that, right? There's a lot of positive things that come out of HR. And I see it with my company, we, we always joke when you walk into my office, a very large office, when you walk in, there's the wall of HR when you first walk in. And, but they're always the first to say hello and, you know, whatever, so it's, it's just a good environment, so, yeah, absolutely very awesome.
I definitely think, um, you can shift people's perspective and, you know, that culture amongst being welcoming, listen to actually listen and not to respond to people. And having that empathetic ear, I think, is important. You have no idea what people are doing when they get home and the hardships that they're facing each and every day, so if they need to come and talk, I'm here and, um, hopefully to give them the black and white and the policies and, you know, how can we help and what does this look like? Sometimes they get overwhelmed by it, so talking through that with folks.
Perfect, thank you.
So I can only imagine, Jessica, over the years, that you've amassed some certifications, some, some plaques on the wall, right? Some, some humanized training in this field. Do you currently possess any of those certificates or specialized training? If so, I probably don't wanna list them all, but do you have any that, off the top of your head, you can think of?
So I did not get my, um, my undergrad or my graduate in HR. I started with my, um, my bachelor's in public health, um, and that's what kinda drove my initial start to my careers. But I have done a few certifications, so I did a course at BCC for professional supervisor course. And then I was a part of a Bryant University course at Blount Fine Foods that they offered onsite. Um, and then as well, I'm in the last year, hopefully, of my masters, and that's through Southern New Hampshire, and that's for organizational leadership. Thereafter, I do have a goal to get my SHRM certificate, um, just trying to put things in the right order, I guess, so.
For you, that's, that's a lot. So how's school going?
It's a lot with two little ones.
I was, that's what I was gonna follow it up with, because you have two little girls at home.
What did I do? I should've done this five years ago.
And you're currently working full-time on town hall?
I am, yes, correct.
So in this position, Jessica, um, you, you may have to do some of the following things. And so, and I'm gonna ask you, do you have any experience in these areas of expertise in that area? Writing job descriptions or employee discipline, right? You've probably heard of these things, right, over the years doing HR work? Employee grievances in or complaints, uh, maybe some workers' comp claims, uh, FMLA management, right? And also workers' comp management. Well, it sounds like things you've handled in the past?
I think I checked the box on all of those. My day to day, right now, is heavily in FMLA and leave of absences, as well as recruiting. Um, we are a growing company right now where I am. Um, so I can't say that I create the job descriptions from scratch, but I do use my teammates and supervisors and managers of those departments to come up and draft these job descriptions to get them to the approval process. Typically, we use Indeed and/or LinkedIn to do most of our recruiting. I think currently, right now, I have probably ten to fifteen, I would say, openings that I'm solely responsible for. Anywhere from hourly, hourly to salary performances, so I do have, um, the recruiting, I, all aspects of it. I do the offer letters, we do the onboarding, the orientation, pretty much start to finish with recruiting.
That's, that's, that's a lot. I've been involved in that part of the, the business, getting everyone up front, doing all the, doing all the trainings and face-to-face and shuffling back and forth and making sure everything's done correctly. It's a lot of coordination, a lot of moving parts.
A lot of resumes to review.
Yeah.
And all resumes are created equal.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, I have a question, Carlos.
Sure.
I, can you briefly tell me what your experience is with HR software?
Yes, so we have, we utilize right now what's called AltiPro or UKG. So within that, that is the employee portal per se, all of their personal information lives within there, their tax, their paychecks, benefits. It's a, um, a tool that they can utilize at home or in the office. Um, we do all of our onboarding through the UKG portal, so once we hire somebody, we would launch an onboarding. They complete their direct deposit, they do all of their, um, policies and procedure sign-offs, and they're already in the system when they start with us. So it makes that process smoother, we got rid of a lot of paperwork, um, and, and it's much quicker and easier for the applicants as well.
And you're proficient in that?
Yes.
And a, as in my, on a different side, because that's one my company uses, we use that same exact software for my company.
And there can be a lot to it.
Like, uh, yeah, so we'll get like emails that say, oh, they, there's been an update to a policy and we have to go in and it's, it's that simple, it's not like someone's calling you, emailing you separately, it's a mass email that goes out, we send, I can come on and there I am and it gives me everything and I have to acknowledge it.
Definitely a direction that the town needs to go in, but the amount of all these policies that we're now drafting and writing and solidifying that now, we need to make sure that sort of everything, everybody has the same information.
Training through it, right? So we have trains through it.
You can do reports to say, okay, how, how many folks have not signed off on this training yet, and then you can target them, so to speak, with those emails and because it does help with the, the manual aspect of all of that.
That's good information to know, to know and have. You, you sat here most of our meeting today and you heard, we talk a lot about policy procedures, we updated a bunch of them today. And, and in this world, HR world, it, it is one of those, almost like rat-bag type of scenarios, like you're a brand new employee, uh, currently at this current state, you're a brand new employee and you have to go to office to office to office to office. Sometimes, for no rhyme or reason, we're just, here's your paperwork, next, next, next. Um, and they do the best they can in, right? Based on that's how we, we've done it for so long. But efficiency-wise, it, it, it must, you, you wanna kinda wanna bang your head on the wall, like going from office to office when you can all do a one-stop shop like you discussed, right? Doesn't have to be difficult to onboard an employee, right? Unfortunately, our policy and procedures, right, like we discussed during the initial interview, need to be one of those things that would need to be looked at, um, almost immediately, right?
Well, and a lot of those things, um, again, because it's a, a portal for the employee to access, so now they're responsible for their time, their vacation, sick time, everything's very transparent. Um, you wanna access the employee handbook, well, you, you click on that, you can load everything to that homepage. Uh, you could put updates every day, every month, birthdays, whatever it is, they know where to go to get information.
Yeah, when we, when I sign on to mine, it tells me everyone who has an anniversary that month and how many years, and then, um, you know, it, it's, yeah, so there's a lot. And then it tells you each day, like I can go on there right now and it tells me how many vacation hours I have left, how many sick hours, um.
How many days to retirement?
I'll get you a piece of paper and show you that.
So it's all, it's all in.
Let me help you, you don't need the piece of paper, right?
And it's, so it is, it's very in-depth, and I'm sure to your point is that there's even more than what we're, my company's utilizing. I mean, we're, we're a rather large and size company, but still, I guarantee there's parts and portal of that portal that we're not even using, so.
Benefits, benefits live within that world.
I mean, you, it's not even, I mean, you have to go to three different departments to get paperwork in the town hall, but not only that, we each have a different, we, all three departments have an employee file. It's not even all kept in one place. So if I want particular information, I gotta get it from the treasurer, or if I want to know benefit questions, I have to go to Isabel. So there is, that's just so disjointed in the way it should be handled, which is why I asked the question, because I definitely have been trying to digitalize and move more in these, more, becoming more efficient because it's, there's just so much more room for error when you have multiple people into multiple, um, into the file and, you know, handling different pieces. Yeah, so I, I think that's probably one of my initial things, and as you know, I mean, you talk about having an employee handbook, well, we don't have one of those just yet, but we're working on that as well, so, um, yeah, there, there, there's gonna be a lot of growing pains and a lot of things that need to be sort of evolved slowly over time but to get us, I think, where we should be in, 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 for, for two thousand and twenty-four, right, so.
So Jessica, I have one quick question.
Companies are still getting there.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, please. So, um, do you have any experience in municipal world in, in this sector or no?
I do not.
No. And that's completely fine, the only reason I ask is someone who walks into this side, myself, four years ago, and trying to understand why certain things are done the way they're done, right? Where your business right now, you're given something and you need to get from point A to point B. You take a straight line and you get there. In this, there's a lot of different little nuances, we'll say, that cause things to happen along the way. So it's completely fine, I'm just asking because it is, it, it can be very different, right? And we have Debbie over here who's a wealth of knowledge, and as well as these two other fine ladies, that they have a lot of knowledge in the way things need to happen or why they need to happen, but it's definitely a learning curve with that, so I have no doubt that you'll learn.
Intimidating too, I didn't know if I wanted to dabble in the municipality and my mom is a police clerk, um, so she, you know, had a few comments to share about some of the challenges that she sees and, um, I'm, I'm up for the challenge, I think.
Well, the reason to my last question really is, so it's been several weeks since we sat down and had our initial discussion and interview, right? We were pretty upfront, honest with you, the state of, of how things are today. And you asked, you asked some great questions, similar to today, as far as where we see ourselves in the future. So it's been several weeks. So I can only imagine you, you formulated some questions in the back of your mind, right? As far as the who's and the whats and the whens. So that leads you to my last question, do you have any questions for us, based on the interview, the position, um, anything really? Moon, the sky, I, I'll get into it.
So I think to Debbie's point, it's, um, a lot of foundational work that needs to be done upfront before you're really even dabbling with the folks, right? Um, and being the face of HR. The job posting set up to twenty hours a week, I believe. With that being said, I don't know, you know, if my hours are restricted to the eight to four-thirty, if you were to decide to move forward with me, but um, my thought was, would you spend a lot of that time maybe, uh, slowing down, making sure the foundation, the employee handbook was done, policies and procedures are done before kind of ramping up those hours?
I, I think definitely we need to start with the foundation, right? Um, and I do think that there's things that we have to iron out, I, I don't know, I think we probably mentioned before, we're very limited in space and we haven't fixed that problem.
Where am I gonna put you, Jessica?
I think she lives like around the corner, so.
I know, so I think there's some conversations to be had on how we're gonna start the process and when, because you currently have a full-time job. You've expressed that when your kids get to school age, you wanna be more part-time so that you can be more hands-on with them. So I, I mean, I, we're, you know, when we start, I think we can work out some more details, um, if the board wants to give me the authority to negotiate or, 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 um, Selectman Loops is usually around too, that we can meet and kind of, okay, if the board wants to move forward with hiring you, what does that look like and where do we go from there? And I, I don't necessarily have the answer, but I'm certainly, I think together we can come up with a plan that works for us all. Funding-wise, here's the, here's where the municipal part comes in, I'm only funded for a certain amount of money through the end of the year. So it has to be those hours, just 'cause we're not totally funded for more hours. So there's where the municipal ties your hands, you can't just, and I have to go to town meeting to ask for more money. It's not like I come to the selectmen and ask for more money, it has to go before the town and say, hey, I wanna have this amount of money and they have to approve it.
Absolutely.
So that, that structure, but I think these are the things we can work out if you're still interested in the position. I definitely think there may be, um, in, out of the gate, there may be some ability to work from home and get some, you know, work on policies and work on how we're gonna come up with some plans before you are thrown into the town hall and, um, although I would love for you to meet, meet the staff, we have wonderful staff. I, I, I think, um, I think you might be welcome there and I think you might be a breath of fresh air for them too, I think. But there's, there, I, I do think we need to do it in a methodical order, just like the harbor master, right? We don't have any rules or regs, it's hard to enforce something you don't even know what you, you don't have.
Right, right, and hearing that today kinda reinforced, like, he brings up some great points.
Yeah, and what, what we don't know, right? So we're gonna rely on you to a certain extent for your knowledge, right? Because we're, we're not HR professionals, you are. So we have to rely, I mean, we'll, we'll do our own research into things and make sure we make the right decisions, but at the same time, you know, we are gonna rely on you to help with that. And I, I just feel like what we talked about before, the foundation is key. So to Debbie's point is, yeah, I, do I wanna get you into town hall to meet everyone? Absolutely, but do I want you sitting there and just trying to work with the, the good folks at town hall? Yes, but I also really want you to focus in on getting us some good standards at what to go by. That, that to me is a no-brainer.
I can envision you sitting somewhere at the cup of tea, trying to put a timeline together of things to do and what order to put them in, and there, there's some bootstrapping going, that's gonna be, need to happen, that's gonna be some, you know, long hauls as far as building that foundation, right? There are things there, there are things in place, but you have to go whip, maybe go look and find it, pull it together and re, ref, you know, lives here now versus living there. Figure out what roles are better suited for the offices we have now, right? Make sure they're working to the best potential ma- maximizer back and forth, right? Or minimize the back and forth and maximize the experience, so if you're like me, this is a challenge, right? I, I'm a big puzzle person, I like challenges, and this, and this is not gonna be an easy feat, right? To any, anybody, whether you or whoever, wh- whomever else sits in that shoe or on that table. This is a challenge, but it's a worthwhile challenge, right? Because ultimately, you, everything come, gels together at the end, right? Like those hard days of working, going through paperwork and making sure we're doing it correctly. At the end of the day, that's a sense of accomplishment, and you, you live, gosh, point one mile from town hall, right? You can just skateboard, scooter downhill to town hall if that were the case, right?
Right.
And that is a sense of feeling that you're helping out your town, and it, and that would be an immense, tremendous help as far as being sure that we're in compliance. And it now being an immense tremendous help as far as being sure that we're in compliance with everything that the employees deserve, right, in town.
I think that's what I want most is to get back to my community in a way that I can use my skills and my experience and at the end of the day, feel good about it. But I do know, once you get that direct phone number or you're officially like sitting in an office somewhere, I know the footsteps don't stop. So that's, that was my thought is, am I going to have time to build the foundation?
I think we definitely can work on that. We do have somebody working on the handbook. So that's something that is is sort of underway, but you could probably work with that person just to have some input. But yeah, I think that my first thought is to work on getting the software. And really, I I have to figure out what that costs and what does that take to get that set up? That's huge, I think. I I I really feel like that's gonna be an immense help to us. So that in itself is a pretty big undertaking. We don't have it. You're gonna have to start from scratch. I have no idea what it looks like. I don't know what it means, but at least you're proficient in it. And then, yes, there's gonna be some time to, we gotta lay the groundwork because we haven't had an HR position. So this is new for you. It's new for us too in terms of how we divvy up. You know, I've 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 done certain aspects, Luanne's done certain aspects, treasurer's done certain aspects, the accountant's office done certain aspects. So there's always that, you know, everybody, when change comes, it's hard, it's difficult. So it's gonna be slow or people are gonna, you know, not be like, what's going on, what's going on? So we wanna make sure that we talk to all departments and see what their thought process are and what what will work for them as well. Like, it's not gonna be just, okay, all right, everybody relinquish all your duties and Jessica's now gonna handle that. It's it's gonna be too much for you. You'll get over, it'll be so overwhelming, it won't be effective. It's not the way I handle things. I like to take one piece, we start with P A. We'll get, we'll get to Z. It takes a while and I and I expect that.
That sounds fabulous. People are afraid of change sometimes and especially when they feel HR, again, that fear comes back, that hesitation instead of collaborating as they push away and I, it's not the environment.
I'm not gonna lie to you. I have my own head, like, I've been handling it, right? So now, so there is, there's gonna be angst with everybody, right? So I I think we definitely will handle that slowly. I always try to, I I try to have the soft landing for things. Sometimes you can't always operate that way, but you try to. So yeah, we have a lot of groundwork to cover. Which is, it's good because we don't have an office for you anyways, so nobody's gonna be coming complaining because you're not gonna be in there.
They gotta find me first, right?
That's right.
That is something we are working on, finding a place.
Jessica, how you feeling? It's easier as you go along, right?
Yeah.
Nice, easy discussion. You have any more questions for us?
Not at this time.
Well, I don't have any more questions for you.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate being here this evening.
Thank you. Honestly, it means a lot. Welcome to our beautiful community.
First time at the police station and it's gorgeous, so.
Yeah, so this is our newest building in town, obviously. So a few years old now, but literally only a few years old versus our town hall, which is.
Say, when I moved here, it was not here, so.
Big pile of rocks.
It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, so we're fortunate.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We will, are probably on the next agenda, make, you know, deter, have them negotiate and make their decision whether they're gonna hire you or not hire you, but so.
Okay.
Yeah, like everything else in the municipal world, we talk, 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 discuss, 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 and then we do everything live on camera.
Very good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Hopefully you're home before bedtime.
Shout out to the deer out. My father-in-law hit a deer this morning or a deer hit him, so be careful out there. It's all the way outside of town in a sonnet, I know.
Right? I got a long commute.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Have a good evening.
You too.
All right. All right, let's re-sharp our pencil. We're going back to agenda item eleven on the personnel board for the following resignations. All right, so A, Linda H. Rebeadis for senior clerk, fire department, effective nine twenty, twenty twenty-four. Again, thank you, Linda, for forty-two great years with the town of Freetown, last seven with the fire department. Thank you, Linda. And now the next three, B, C, and D, Jeffrey Amroth, Brian Almeda, and Amanda Barlow. All three are from the Open Space Recreation Advisory Committee and they resigned effectively on nine seventeen and nine eighteen respectively. I wanna thank Jeffrey, Brian, and Amanda. I started, this was one of my first committees or advisory committees here in town. A lot of great work has been done by that committee, getting to where it is today. A lot of great team, a lot of great memories. So congrats to your accomplishments and everybody on that committee. Let's move on to agenda number twelve, discussion vote to approve GLC forty-one, one eleven F, injured on duty status effective nine eight, twenty twenty-four. This is one of our first responders, injured himself in the line of duty. So we wish him well, but for HIPAA laws and everything else, protect his, protect him and and his his healing. So chapter one fourteen, oh, sorry, one eleven F is there for a reason. So have you had a chance to read it and see what occurred and everything else?
Yeah.
Pretty straightforward.
Absolutely. Needs to be done.
So it needs to get done. So that said, entertain the motion to approve the GLC forty-one, one eleven F for the officer injured on duty, status effective nine eight, twenty twenty-four.
I will make that motion.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item agenda thirteen, it is discussion and vote to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Freetown and the Public Employees Union, Local two seventy-two, Launa, Freetown Highway Department for Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement, effective seven one, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-seven. All right, one more union that we've negotiated with and like like everything else, you know, some changes had needed to be made. And I I believe you were the the selectman on this on this one. So like all bargaining units, we make sure we're, we update everything up to twenty twenty-four standards, make sure that our employees receive a fair wage based on their counterparts from other towns. And this is on the agenda, so we succeeded in that. Everyone agreed to it.
Yes.
So here we are.
Absolutely.
Anything to add to it or?
No, no, I think you, you know, you kind of summed it up, right? There's there was certain things that they, it's it's always an agreement, right? Where you have two sides who have to come together and neither one's happy in the end. If neither party's happy in the end, mission accomplished. So, you know, I think I think they were given a fair deal. I I think they feel like they were, right, in the end, so. Yeah, no, I mean, it's it's really it.
Perfect. Excellent. All right, well, I entertain the motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the town of Freetown and the Public Employee Union, Local two seven-two, Launa, Freetown Highway Department for Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement, effective seven one, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-seven.
Uh, motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, item agenda fourteen has been scuttled for future meeting, fifteen. Discussion and vote to approve the following appointments. A, Natersia C. Fonseca as full-time clerk, senior clerk, fire department, effective nine twenty-four, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-five. B, Kermely S. Failes as department assistant, effective nine ten, twenty twenty-four through twelve eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And C, Kelly Camara as planning and land use admin, effective ten eight, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-five. So we know Kermely, she's a returning employee. And the Natersia and Kelly were all interviewed and went through the interview process and they were identified as the highest rated ones based on our criteria. So two great additions. Everyone's excited to have them coming on board. And I don't see, foresee any issues or see any issues why we don't move forward with their appointment.
Absolutely. Do I?
So that said, I entertain the motion to approve the appointments listed A, B, and C on item agenda fifteen.
Mi- motion made.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, interview, all right, sixteen has been done. So back to you.
So I'm pretty sure we don't have anyone to ask any questions. So that I'm going to sign unless Debbie, do you have anything? I mean, you can go over anything if you want while we're signing.
Oh, good. So I'll I'll update you just on, you know, fire station's underway. See that? The frame is going up.
I saw that.
Yeah, so that's exciting. The highway department's done an awesome job working on getting the site ready for the pod at the COA. Yeah, you can just get them the, while they sign, I I'll keep talking. So that's, that's what's going on with the pod. I'm meeting the forms guy out there tomorrow morning to, there's a wall that needs to be poured with Chuck. Chuck's crew's been crazy busy, asphalt roads and striping roads and that's what's going on there. So of course it's getting ready for the big election. The door is in at FES Gymnasium. The, I don't believe the handicap ramp has got railings on it as of yet, but it's there, it's in place.
Oh, they've already put all the concrete and everything else?
Yeah, the concrete's there, just not the railing that's on order and it's supposed to be here in three weeks. So that should be done for the big election.
Excellent.
The fire, the fire strobes were complete at the school and up and running. In fact, they had a fire alarm over the weekend. I was notified. There was no fire, but everything worked as it should. What else do we got going on? We have a lot of stuff going on. The radio project is nearing completion. They're just working out some minor bugs. But the, you know, the majority of the radio communication project is done, so that is good. Working on the bridge project. I had a meeting with Mastiot and because the federal funding comes through Mastiot, so I'm working on that. I don't know. I think, well, I can't even think of all the other projects we got going on.
Know what I just heard? Things getting checked off the list.
Yeah.
And that's, and it's a great feeling to have a lot of things accomplished and removed from said list.
Yeah, we're we're moving. Some big projects are getting complete, right? Like the radio communications, that's been, I don't know, two and a half years, three years in the making. There was a lot to get that where it is today, so I'm super excited. I'm I'm waiting for them to tell me it's a hundred percent complete because I'm I'm gonna be over the moon. But the fire station, you know, to get it to the point where it's framing, that there's a lot that happens prior to. And I'm super excited because now this is actually the easy part. And then the pods, we've struggled with that as well, with the engineers back and forth, and we're finally there. We're finally like, okay, I, all the answers are, the questions are answered and we can move forward with that project. So funding's in place. We're on track, all projects, which is also, you know, good that we're not over on anything. We're not looking for additional funds. So that's just, while you guys were signing, I give you the update and that's where we're at.
That's it, huh? That's all we got?
I'm sure there's more I forgot about.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, but it's it's just, it's a testament.
Those are the big ones, right? That you can see, people drive around, they can see that those things are happening, that they, you know, these are the things they approved at town meeting two years ago, but now they're happening, you know?
No, that's a very valid point, right? So the the money, they they were gracious to give us the money that long ago and now we're finally able to do something. And it's not.
Not for lack of effort.
Yeah, not for lack of effort. I wanna make that very clear. So so thank you, Debbie, honestly, Luanne.
It's a team, it's a team. I I I have to, I take credit, but I have, I have to say, my team, both Lola and Luanne, we work as well oil machine and I I don't think we can operate without one of us. It's it's just, it works and it is a well-oiled machine at this point.
I I I'll say it and I said, I said it a million times before, I'm gonna say it a million times again. So thank you from the bottom of my heart, so.
You're welcome.
All right, so with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.